...this meeting has been noted in accordance with the open public meeting act.
Yes, your honor.
Those will be a little awkward. Can everybody please stand up and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All call please.
This is Baccio.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Syack.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Estevito.
Here.
Mr. Lenbo.
Here.
Mrs. Stratten.
Here.
And Mr. Mackinon.
The President. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a tough past week. I've gotten a lot of advice from a lot of people. When I woke up this morning, the Earth is still rotating. And I think after the governor stops pounding his fists and the smoke clears, we're still going to have a school district and we're going to still have almost 6,000 students to educate. That's not going to change. I was reading the papers throughout the weekend and picking out articles and I left my folder in the car. It's been one of those days, but this was in a Saturday newspaper about some of the school districts and what they're doing. And it talks about a couple of school districts passing on the cut to the taxpayer. One town taxes increasing $630 on the average home. Other districts cutting 57 positions, variety of programs, all extracurricular activities, courtesy busing, the district's kindergarten program, and all advanced placement courses. I read in the paper today about Woodbridge canceling their kindergarten program. I'm telling you right now, from my perspective, and I met with the Finance Committee again on Friday, and what we're going to propose today is unanimous decision and recommendation of the Finance Committee to the full board. I guess everybody in this room is like me, we're Sayov residents. And what we're not going to do is decimate our school district. We're not going to do that. You know, education is a service, enterprise if you will, and we need to continue to provide that service. We had a lot of heated debate, and I think what's interesting about this budget you hear tonight is not only, you know, kind of what's -- we cut out of it, but what in fact that we left in it. There were major things, major programs, that I call high-value programs, that the Finance Committee purposely, intentionally left in. Things like full-day kindergarten, things like courtesy busing for the little ones, K-25. We can offer all these things with a minimal increase in taxes versus going to the max of 4 percent cap and having to cut all these things out. And all weekend I'm wondering, why are all these districts doing that? And we're in this situation where we can raise taxes minimally, of course minimally is a matter of perspective, and still be able to offer these services and still continue what we're doing here in Sayov. And I think, you know, we've been running efficiently for many years. And I think that is coming to fruition now. So what you're going to see today is what we discussed over the last couple of months. We did not anticipate the large amount that was cut, but we were not unprepared for that. So we're going to go through any questions you have. Everybody should have several different colors of paper, a blue, a yellow, a pink, and a green. That was Mr. Bishada's recommendation on Friday. It was a pretty good idea. We're going to be working off the blue that's on the screen right now. Okay?
I ask that some of my people, if you have a packet, if you please would relinquish the packet and give it to someone who needs the packet. And if you need a packet, raise your hand. And you guys could share hopefully. We just killed about 5, 3.
Right. Hi, Marie. How are you? Yeah. Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
So we are going to be using the blue page. Ladies and gentlemen, the blue page that will be on the screen, and that will be cross-reference to the green. So the page numbers you see on the blue cross-references to accounts on the green.
Don't look at me, I'm colorblind.
Dr. Alfonso, if you'd like to take us to that budget analysis.
Sure. I just want to just reiterate a little bit about what Mr. Mackinon said. I just realized, I just got a call from one of my colleagues in a more affluent quote-unquote district. And they're letting go about 50 staff, all right? And the reason that we're sort of holding water here is because our operating budget to begin with was below adequacy. So when -- what that means is, is when the governor cuts 5 percent off of our operating budget, it wasn't 5 percent off of 100 million, it was 5 percent off of, let's say, 70 million. Yes, it killed us. It was a $3.8 million decrease, but for some other districts, it was twice as much with basically the same size district as we have. So they got hit double hard as we did. So we've been spending efficiently, we've been watching what we've been spending, and subsequently now, you know, we're in a position where we never thought we were going to get hit with 3.8, but as Mr. Mackinon so eloquently stated, is that we were prepared. And I didn't want to make any statements to, you know, to create some hysteria, but at the same time, if you look at these cuts, and this is $3.8 million we're cutting out of here, and really, we're not cutting any staff. We haven't gone through -- but understand, people say, well, where are you getting 3.8 million from? You're getting it from capital projects, which is about 3 point -- which is about 2.1 million, okay? We're adding another $700,000 in surplus. So what we're doing right now is we're floating a lot on what we've done in the past and what we have to generate. So of the 3.8, 2.8 of it is that. We also have, if you looked on that sheet towards the bottom of the first page, the blue page, there's a section called contractual reductions. These are the things that could be out of attrition and things of that nature and contractually, where we're going to have to make up $718,000. Do I know we're going to make them up? That's a roll of the dice. So we're really going to try to, and we're going to have to work with Ms. Bloom, the Association, and we're both going to have to try to give and take. If we don't, that 718, we don't hit that 718 number, that 718 number is going to turn into staff. Because, you know, I'm just being honest with you, we had to make the budget. So that's the -- on the bottom of the blue page, you'll see right before, the first page is all non-staff, okay? So when you look at the blue page, it's all non-staff. The back is all staff. So let's look at the first page. Now, like Mike said, you tie it in. If you see right here, if you look on the screen, your blue page is right here. So basically, what we did is the first set of about seven areas, which are all the schools, and these, this is the page on the justification, which is the green, so it goes from page 10 to 11. And basically, we cut approximately, so about $60,000 in library books. However, some of the principals and the supervisors basically said that we're going to take that out of our general budget. So yes, it's going to be a little bit lean with library books next year, but we're going to do the best that we can. The goal was, again, and all my administrative team, supervisors, everybody, we want to keep people, we want to keep bodies. It's about personnel. That's what's going to make it good. You have the greatest programs in the world, if you don't have the people to put those programs through, we're going to be in trouble. And that's what we concentrated on. I really have to thank the board and the administration and the supervisors for really pushing that. So those are the first seven. The next one down where you see line 11, which is right here, is a high school copier. I know that the people in the high school are probably gasping because they keep saying, we need another copier machine. Well, you're not getting one next year. And all due respect, right now, that's on page 15, so we cut that $5,000 out. The next is supplies, high school middle states. Middle states is an evaluation program for certification. We decided to defer that because we just went through monitoring through the state. This is a federal type of situation that the, you get accredited. We were accredited, Mr. Brown, what, five years ago, I believe it was?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're asking for what, a two-year extension?
No, we're, we got a two-year extension because of the addition. We're up in the fall of 2011.
Okay. So we're pushing that for one year. So hopefully, we will, you know, we don't really need that money right now, it's about $5,000. The next line, which is line 13, page 21, on your, I guess it's green, supplies for new computers for the administration, that's $31,600, $660. Again, this does not touch the kids, we pulled that out. And that's on page 21. Truman doors, unfortunately, we had it in the budget, we're pulling those roll-down doors, which is on page 22, we pulled those out. The next is, again, this is a cafe, this cafeteria, Depp Cafe, I like that. Deficit. We're going to pull that out. We're going to make it this year, ladies and gentlemen. We've got $110,000, we run a little bit into deficit. That's on page 39. I know that the ladies have done a tremendous job, and I couldn't be more supportive. And I know, in the future, we're going to make that number disappear. We've done a very good job this year because, obviously, we've got a full cafeteria now, and it's running very, very well. And I will be there, I guess, what is it, April 15?
Yes.
I will be there with the NJAs coming in and with NJN?
If I could, we're still running a deficit.
Right.
We're just going to fund it in a separate year.
Right. But we're going to try to eliminate that deficit.
Next year.
We're doing the best that we can. I don't want to get into the contractual end of it, but I think we could, we could get much closer to that number than we've ever had before. And I'm confident we will. Supplies, if you look at line 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22, I'll tell you, we were going to go as high as 40 percent. When it, when all was said and done, that was the full reduction of the original budget for regular classroom supplies. That doesn't mean we're losing consumables, okay? We're really going to, you might have to cut back a little bit, but all the principals and the supervisors, again, it came down to, do we want personnel or do we want supplies? And obviously, it came down to a 30 percent reduction, if you look at the whole situation. And that runs from pages 42 all the way, I guess, to 45. And, you know, we're going to be a little bit tight this year when it comes to supply, but we'll do the best that we can. Lost and damaged books, believe it or not, that's, that's, there's a lot of money involved in that. And this year, we're really going to do the best that we can to make sure that we get the books back and that we make a very good concerted effort to make sure that, that if kids lose their books, that they pay for them. And we've really got to keep track of it. We are not going to get, I believe we have a few, I believe history had a 150 new textbooks, is that correct, Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
I thought that was still in there. And there was, and there was maybe one other that was in there. So we didn't cut that account totally. That account was over, I believe, that account was 180,000, off the top of my head, and I think, so we cut about a 33 percent of it, just like we did with supplies. I, I'm pretty good with those percentages because when I was in baseball, I just wanted to know I was bad. So anyway. And those are, those are the areas that we took to cut. Okay. Middle school roof, this was a double hit. The middle school roof, the first time, we cut 460 out of it. We can have to cut another 500. So really, the entire middle school roof, that's where I'm talking about capital projects, we cut about 2.1 million. This is one of the projects on page 63 that basically we cut out. I would like to commend Ms. Stoffey and the Special Education Child Study Team. If you look at tuition in general, basically tuition from this year till from last year to this year, it's probably down about $400,000. And that's because we're bringing back a lot of children from out of district placements. That's the only new people that are in the budget are those new, are those students. It's sort of like a wash that are coming back from other outside schools back into our schools. But you'll see that we do have two new special education teachers, but that's only because the tuition line has dropped by $400,000, and we're bringing back our preschool program that we were running out of the district with the, with the commission, which was called the collaborative. So we, obviously, we have to fund that. We need two teachers and four aides. And we're going to do okay with that. And that was on page one. IQ test, again, Ms. Zaydow is very astute by telling us, you know what? This is one of the tests that we use, correct me if I'm wrong, for tag. And we have other ways of doing this, so we said, let's cut 20 grand out of our testing budget, and we could do, we could do it some other ways, multitesting the children, not using that IQ test, which is very expensive. This year, we always have $60,000, I hate to see this go, but 50,000 of it we're going to cut. Curriculum writing, which is on page nine, for the justification, this has been a very, very successful program. Unfortunately, tough times, we're going to slow that down. The only new courses that we're going to write curriculum for are new courses, brand-new titled courses. I hate to see that go, but it's something that, again, I'd rather have two teachers or a teacher and a half. And that's what we decided. We're taking a little, we're taking a little bit of a chance, but I think what we're going to do here with lines 28, 29, and 30, tuition reimbursement, which basically, those are the teachers that go out to other schools for their college credits. You know, we're down a little bit, so we're going to really take a hard look at that and try to reduce that figure by 30 grand. Professional development conferences, we're going to be very strict with those. We're not going to send as many people out. We figured we could save about 20 grand. And then with travel, I'm sure we could cut back, especially now since, obviously, we're not going to send as many people out. So that's just this trickle-down effect. And these are some of the things that I got to talk to the SCA about as well. I mean, we have to work together because, if you can see that, that's saving a person's salary. And that's basically what we try to do. We have a good relationship with the SCA, and I think we'll all work together. Line 31 is the RE180. Right now, it is not internet-based. I asked Ms. Riley, and I believe that internet-based, was that in the middle school? Did we want to do that?
Middle school and the SUVS.
And the SUVS. And Mr. Agulhas and Ms. Chukubic said that, you know, we'll just have to wait another year. $37,000 is a lot of money on page 41.
So we'll try, Dr. Alfonso, to see if we can get that into the Title I grant for the UES. The middle school isn't a Title I school, but we will try at least to cover part of that expense through grant money.
Unless the Internet license cracks is home.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
When you look at lines 32 and 33, pages 44, you can see we took some money out of tag. It's not, again, we could always subsidize tag with the regular A budget. So we obviously went to Ms. Baumann and Mr. Agulhas, who the fifth grade, bought the fifth grade tag is in, and we can work it out, it's not a big head. But every, every little bit helps. Here's where we took a big hit. And this is where technology, remember, we talked about that. Unfortunately, $85,000. We had a bunch of smart boards, a bunch of netbooks, cameras in different schools. Every single principal supervisor said, look, they got to go. I would rather keep my people, that's two teachers. And I got to admit, everybody worked together, page 46, and they said, that's just the way it's going to be. Some initiatives on lines 35 and 36, which is eight grand at all, and again, at Eisenhower, 10, 10 grand. Again, this was the safe staff. Part-time secretaries, secretaries, they said, you know, we'd rather give up $18,000 and hold on to our part-time secretaries or lunchades. That's where these things came from, which is lines 50 and 51. Where am I? Okay. That's athletic equipment, new. Basically, those are treadmills and things of that nature. Unfortunately, the botanist was not there, so he's just finding out that he just lost $17,000. But he'll get over it. Page 62. Technology equipment, unfortunately, two mobile labs, they cost about $14,000 each. Once again, we got rid of that. Construction services, once again, it's in that line item with different maintenance and so on and so forth. PA system, clocks at all, and Eisenhower, that was a big nut, at $167,200, which is on, this is on page 63. I mean, you have to understand, some of this stuff is so outdated that for years and years and years, we keep putting it off, this is another year, we're just not going to do it. Sooner or later, we're going to have to do it, but Mr. Byrne and Mr. Skoronsky were both in agreement that that should be cut. Since we're cutting all these projects, we saved, capital projects, we saved $86,300 on page 63. Then we went into insurance, we cut about $13,000 off, out of our liability insurance on page 13. We cut it once, and we said, I will cut it again. So we cut about $13,000 out of our workers' comp. Police coverage, it's not like it's not going to be available, but we cut that in half. We're going to try to do a little bit more with less. That's some of the police coverage at games, some of the police coverage, I believe, in the parking lot in the afternoon. Security guards might have to do a little bit more, but we decided to cut that. That's on page 27, that's line 43. Energy, we've been talking about this. We had, we had a company come in called Schools for Energy Efficiency, which is C. We are really going to try to see if we could really change our behavior in regard to energy conservation and try to drop that number down by $100,000. It's a crapshoot again. I just don't know whether or not we're going to be able to do that, but we're going to try, especially the high school now is one-third larger. And we made a conscious effort to try to do that, which is on page 28. Page 25.
You just said there that, like, the board gets a monthly cleaning reports, the board is going to request a monthly building energy consumption as well.
Can you write that down, the someone, so I know how to do that? I know, I knew I forgot something. Thank you for reminding me, Mr. Mackinon. Slaver School relocation of offices, I guess we're going to do that, Emilio and I. $18,700. He's been a little light on his feet lately, so this way we'll get some exercise. All right. Building insurance, that's basically, we cut that by 6,000. $10,000, we still, I think we cut, it's a $60,000 note, we cut it by 10,000. It's not going to have that much of an effect, but we figured, let's cut a little bit. Eighteen Lou, we cut 66, 60. Workers' compensation, we cut 13,000. And I basically told you in the beginning that this is no line item, this 718, this is a guesstimate. This is something that I'm going, we're going to have to work with, either through attrition, either through contractual concessions, either mutual agreements, but this is, this is a crapshoot. So we're trying to, as best as we can, come to some sort of an agreement with contractual reductions, and I think we can hit that number. And it's really a lot to do with, out of attrition, where somebody leaves, we don't replace them, and sometimes we don't, you know, if we can not do as much in some of the areas, we'll try to roll back some of them across. Non-staff, that's about 2.5 million, okay? That's what we pulled out. Now, staffing, I believe that's the second page of the blue sheet. There is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just turned around.
All right, it's on the backside. This is not really on your sheet, it's not on any page, this was never really put in the budget, it was kind of sitting out there, so we're pulling it out. This is all new stuff. New technology person, unfortunately, Sandy, you know, there's nothing we can do about it, $35,000. One maintenance and one HVAC that we wanted, new, that's gone. So there were two maintenance people. Middle school language arts, gone. Two high school teachers, gone. Elementary, and this is all new again, this is not, not anybody that is presently there. One elementary teacher at Eisenhower, gone. The insurance for those individuals, based on $15,000, is $105,000. Then you have two custodians out of attrition. We probably lose a custodian every two months out of attrition, whatever. We're just not going to replace those, one at the middle school, one at the UES. We could not do the high school, it's just too large of a building, and they just added another, actually, we should be adding maybe one or two more. So it's going to be tough in the high school. So we're saving about $80,000, that's on page 27. I don't like doing this because I never really know what breakage is, but we just got four retired teachers, and we're adding, we're adding $25,000 a pop, so that's $100,000. And we're not replacing one phys ed teacher at the high school, and that's basically a $90,000 savings. If you add all that up, that's $665,000. That's 3.168, which is one, which is, now you say, where do we get the other $648,000? Well, that's when we raised the taxes by about $30 to $88.53. Our initial tax base was around, I believe it was 55, so we raised it about $33 to $648. We could conceivably have raised that tax increase to 4 percent. It is only at 3 percent. We could have raised it another $600,000. We, we and the board decided, we sort of meet each halfway, that's where we're coming up with that $3.8 million that we needed. Our budget is now balanced, and that's, that's about it. So, I don't know.
Just, oh, quickly, it just shows that, and it's not just New Jersey, Kansas City schools closed one half of their schools. This is all over the country. And I have to applaud the administration because we could throw out the number $3.8 million, it sounds like a lot. But if you just look at that whole front page of pain to, to stuff that, one of the most efficient districts in the state of New Jersey, and we're not touching any staff, because when we touch staff, we increase class size, we increase class size, we decrease test scores, that's all science. I mean, there's no questions about it. So I have to applaud everybody, especially the Finance Committee. There's a lot of pain here, and it's going to get worse next year. I just hope these numbers hold true, because if they don't hold true, we're going to be in for worship.
Okay, I'm going to be the sec, Mr. Clark. Understand one thing, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to tell you right now, if this budget goes down and it gets cut by the mayor and council, you talk at staff. There's no, on programs, there's no place else to go here. I don't care who comes here and look at this budget, I'm telling you, it's to the bare bones. And next year, we, there's no way we could do any more surplus. We're just, we're at a point right now that if it goes down, that I, there's no other, and believe me, our initial, we, like you said, Mr. Clark, there was staff in it. And we, and that $600,000 in taxes that you just saw there, that was $600,000 in staff. So you figure out where we pulled it from. So, I mean, the board was awesome by saying, you know what? We'll take $600,000. We don't like moving, moving the tax base up to $88, but what's the alternative? You know, 35 kids in a geometry class, 31 kids in a, in a first grade, 32 kids on average. I'm not talking about in one class. And I came from an environment where I had 37 kids in a kindergarten bilingual class, where kids were sitting on the, you know, sitting on the ratiators. So I know what it's like to go into that environment. And believe me, it's not easy. And obviously, you're going to lose something. You're not, you're not going to, you're not going to get the quality education that you want from a school district. I want to tell you what my colleagues are doing in Middlesex County. I'm looking at the Rarinen Bridge. I'm telling you, and I'm not kidding you. There's a lot, there's a lot of people there, and I know I have a meeting on Friday, and a lot of people just have no idea, and I'm telling you, a lot of them are going to cap. Don't let, don't let Governor Christie kid you. What he did was, he pushed you to go to cap. He pushed you to go to 4 percent. He pushed you to say, well, I'm not raising the taxes, okay? He's pushing us to say, and then obviously, you have some contractual issues now that you, obviously, everybody's going to have to start to get into. It is what it is. So he's taking it from the State Department. In the last month, he has pulled $1.3 billion from school systems. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying, maybe it's long overdue, maybe things needed to be done. Something has to be done because the State Department, obviously, if they keep spending money they don't have, is going to go bankrupt. And something has to be done. But it's not my fault that the pension system is out. I don't spend money I don't have.
One other thing to mention, too, how much do we contribute into pension system this year? 800, I think it's 800, Ken?
I've got budget for next year. It's not going to really change.
So just think, if we, if we turned around and said, well, we're not going to budget for the $800,000, that's what the state does, and we're not going to budget for it, then we could easily make our budgets. But that's what's been going on.
Just taking the board, the discussions with the Finance Committee was, should we be asking things on ballot question? And we talked about that. Take some of these big-ticket items that we left in the budget, like the full-day kindergarten...
Take some of these big-ticket items that we left in the budget, like the full-day kindergarten, like the courtesy bus in K through five, and ask us ballot question. But I, I think we recall about four years ago, when we, we put courtesy bus in for six through twelve on, on, on the ballot question, and it didn't only go down once, it went down twice. Um, and, and we, we had some serious discussion, and it's something to be said about, I like ballot questions, because there's people in option, that you wanna fund this or not. Um, right now, um, in our kindergarten program, I think it affects four hundred and fifty kids. So, you cut that in half, and, um, you know, it's time to put up, you know, put the armor on again, because of what happened the last time. And also, you know, you look at money, what are you saving with going from a full day to half-day kindergarten, when they have to run two sets of buses, because you're taking kids back and forth twice? So, what is the actual savings? And I, I look at things from a money perspective, yeah, I live in town and I pay taxes, too, but I also have to look at, you know, what value things are to the educational process. Same thing with courtesy busing. Um, I, I think if this board said, um, you know, we would take courtesy busing out, I, I think we proved that we would do that, you know, that's no longer a threat, if we have to do that, we have to do that. Um, but to take courtesy busing out for K through five, we really talked about that, and we looked at the logistics of doing that. Number one, I personally don't wanna do that. If you look at the location of our elementary schools, and, and what traffic you could cause there, um, so obviously, those are things that, do you wanna ask them on a second ballot question, and what happens if they go down? They go down, you can't fund them, might believe you need a sixty percent, not just a, a regular majority, to get those things passed. So, we talked all about those things, and we made a consensus here that, uh, this is our town, what do we wanna do with it? Um, you know, people tell me, "Well, um, you know, it takes leadership to just, um, you know, go to zero on your budget." And I say, "Well, I argue the other way, it takes leadership to say, 'Hey, we wanna maintain our school district,' and I think the school district is the character of town." And I also may ask people, "Why do people move to Sable? And, and it's not for Bello's Tavern." And I know if Dennis Bello was sitting next to me, he would probably argue that. But it is because we have a low crime rate and we have a decent school district. I think we should not mess with either of those two things. And, you know, um, I always said that, um, in, in my prior occupations, you know, that diversity builds character, and I think crisis defines it, and this is a defining moment for Sable Board of Education. This is our town, it's our school district. You wanna decimate it, I can walk out of here and give you a zero budget and carry me out on your shoulders, if that's what you wanna do. But, um, you know, I don't have kids in the school district anymore. I had three, I think my payback to the school district is not to decimate it. And I, I think my fellow people on the finance committee, we, we share that.
Absolutely.
It's our recommendation to the board, that this is the way to go. Um, if anybody on the board has any questions, concerns, or any issues with any of the items on here, now's the time.
Mr. Limbo? I, I just want to say, uh, again, as Mr. McMonahan and Dr. O'Tannell said, our priority was not to cut personnel and to keep courtesy busing and full-day kindergarten. And as far as the efficiency that our district has operated at in the past, if you look at the New Jersey report card, and these are state numbers, not our own numbers, comparable districts, K through five, with student populations of thirty-five hundred or more, we are the fourth lowest spending per, per student district in the state. At the county, in the whole state, fourth lowest. That tells you how efficient we've always operated, and as Dr. O'Tannell said, that's why we didn't get hit as badly as some, as some other districts did. But our, our first priority was to keep our, to keep our personnel, as Mr. McMonahan said, not to decimate the school district, keep it moving forward.
Mrs. Digness, is Paco having a hand?
I have a lot of questions, so if you have...
Oh, yeah, it's just real, it's a procedural thing. You know, for years, we've been saying, uh, courtesy busing, full-day kindergarten, and we were serious about it, because we're at that point. Um, county superintendents now are the last line before we submit this budget, they're under a lot of pressure. Is Dr. Bagary gonna approve us?
He's already passed.
Good. Thank goodness. If it fails, we're in trouble. There's no doubt in my mind, because the first thing, and the, the new governor, and with all this funding, has said repeatedly, "If it's not mandated, it's going." So, we're not joking anymore. This wasn't, uh, thrown out there, "We're gonna cut full-day kindergarten," just to get you upset and come to the, come, vote for the budget. This is serious, though. This is real serious.
Budget goes down, we'll test the character of the council.
That's right.
I can't wait.
Absolutely.
Mr. Clark, uh, Clark.
I just finished. The, uh, the other thing that I think is worth pointing out is, one of the reasons we're not cutting staff in this budget is because we made a series of good decisions up until this point. When all of that money was coming in from Governor Corzine in terms of funding to education, we made a conscious decision that we weren't exactly sure it was gonna last, and sooner or later, this money may go away, especially since he was tapping federal sources. So, where we put that money was towards capital improvements. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we put one point four million into capital improvements. Two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two point four million into capital improvements. So, we used that money for one-time shots where we would not be incurring reoccurring costs where we would need to lay off staff. In addition to that, we've also taken a portion of that money and used it for tax relief. The amount of surplus that we applied in oh-eight, oh-nine was one point six million. In two thousand nine, it was two million. So, that money was put towards one-time uses as opposed to recurring uses, which has enabled us now to be in a situation where we don't have to cut staff. The one thing that was not mentioned that the finance committee also considered in addition to the full-day kindergarten cut, was that we weren't only talking about curricular items, we were also looking at cutting our entire middle school sports program, our middle school co-curricular program, uh, and also an administrator, because we said if we're gonna start cutting staff, we also have to cut an administrator. But when we made a decision that we weren't going to cut anybody, we put those items back in, and we, as I said, adjusted for it by adjusting the, uh, the tax increase, because we thought that those items were vital to our district.
Anybody else, Mrs. Paco has questions? Anybody else wanna say anything?
Um, I just have a question about the police coverage. What would that include? Would that be like the middle school in the afternoon?
Well, it's, uh, we talked about that in the finance committee, includes, uh, police officers at the football games, and includes the police officers at the basketball games, and includes a police officer that roams around, uh, you know, during the day throughout the parking lots. Um, and that was a seventy thousand dollar hit. We, we talked about, we've been at football games, and we've seen the police there. Um, and I always comment, and I don't have anything negative to say about our police department, but I always notice the lieutenants and sergeants there, you know, at the games, and that cost us, you know, and, and where they're dispatched. I think that we can look at this, um, and athletic director to have discretion on what games he thinks he needs more police coverage on, and I think we have a good gauge of that, especially in the basketball games. Football games, we need police officers, yeah, you need the crowd control, you need the traffic coming out of the school.
What I mean, for like the middle school?
Uh, middle school, I don't know what...
Middle school traffic is horrible. Without one there, it's phenomenal.
Well, no, not, not, that's, 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 that's granted. Those are same, yeah. This is just security at our extra curriculum bench, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Strata, do you have any? Ms. Strata?
Sorry, and speaking of that, um, with the security, so we're not going to go to zero on the police security at the football games and at the basketball games, we're gonna kind of maybe like cut it in half, and if we need to add, like you said, Mike, then we'll add it.
We need eight police officers at a football game. Could we use four? Could we use five?
Right.
We're going to, so. Um, and if they need help, they can radio us.
I think police presence is very important.
I do, too, that's why we didn't cut it down to zero, yeah. And then the basketball games, hit missing, you know, if Sable's playing Old Bridge, yeah, we may not need cops, you know, I, you know, it all depends on, let the, uh, Mr. O'Tannell make that call based on who the opponent is. But I'm not advocating getting rid of all the police, but we cut them in half, that, that enough will get me a phone call, that's okay.
Right. And bas, sorry, and basketball, uh, John, basketball is, we have a lot of our staff that, that police the gym as well. Do we have that in football or not?
No, uh, it's very limited at football games.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
They are used, the staff is used, but not as much as basketball and wrestling.
Okay.
That is combined with the gym.
Thank you, I need some of these.
It's a different, uh, sorry.
That's why we left half of it. And if, and I guess if, if the need comes, we have to have more police, then we look at the operating budget and we fund it if we can.
And, and I'd like to say a couple of other things about the busing. I, I thought about cutting, or, you know, a, as much as I hate to say this, about cutting the elementary busing, and then I thought about the, the screw-up that would go on, especially at Truman and at Wilson School, that we, they just can't handle the traffic. And God forbid, somebody got hurt, I, I couldn't live with myself. So, obviously, that's, that's not an option in my world, and same thing with the kindergarten, it's, um, well, we're so advanced with our kindergarten that I would hate to go to half-day kindergarten.
That's, yeah, that was, I think that we concurred with that. Is there anything for Mrs. Paco? Mrs. Paco? What was yours?
Okay. Um, I suppose I have some tax questions. For the fund balance you applied, um, two point seven million, what's the projected balance left in percentage?
I'm projecting one point five, which is, should be right around two percent.
You're projecting one point five percent, what it should be two percent?
One point five million, which should be around two percent.
Just explain what that is for folks that may not know.
By law, you're allowed to go to two percent of your current year expenditures, so this current year expenditure, based on my calculation, it should bring us to around one point five, but, uh, at year-end, the auditors come in based on actual expenditures that you have that can be made, and there are minimal adjustments that you can make, too. And the other thing is, is that we, at this point, we have depleted all of our reserve accounts also.
Okay, and if you look at this, um, budget report, where it says two thousand eight orders, two thousand nine orders, that goes ten, is two thousand and nine the current year?
No, two thousand eight refers to two thousand seven, eight, two thousand nine refers to two thousand eight, nine, and the adjusted budget for two thousand ten is the current year.
Okay, so where is this year's numbers?
I just didn't print them out, the, I chose to use the adjusted budget, because you can show, I can do it in several different formats. And the format we've always used is the adjusted budget recovery.
Okay, so, do you think that the adjusted budget numbers are realistic to compare to actuals then?
I'm estimating that we're gonna spend ninety-seven percent of our current year budget.
Okay, and these numbers, adjusted budget numbers?
Well, obviously, they re, they represent three percent more than what we're gonna expect.
Right, but how close are they, I mean, I know it's only March, how close are they to what you, this is what you would project the actual to be at the end of the year? These numbers?
No, as again, as I said, I'm projecting we'll spend ninety-seven percent of our operating, so, if you wanna look at every single line item, take three percent off of it, that would be the expense.
Okay, so the numbers are all been adjusted except for the three percent? In other words, they've been adjusted more to reflect reality?
Yeah.
So, I could look at those numbers and say, "Okay, that's close to where you think we're gonna end," if you've adjusted those numbers. Okay, all right, and if you look on page, page eight...
Which one? Page, uh, it could be the white one.
Right, it'll be pink.
It would be, no, it would be green, your green.
Green.
I'm assuming that anyone on the right one or the same?
Yeah.
Okay, um...
Page eight.
If you look at page eight, and then you look at page fourteen, and I see that you, you did a transfer of eighty thousand for, um, administration, but then you have a hundred thousand dollar cut for the administrator.
Right, and the new green one puts a hundred thousand back in.
So, the white one and the green one are not the same?
No, the green one tonight is, the new updated based on the finance committee.
This white one is the one we got in our...
The white one's the one I got on Friday. So, the green one tonight is different than the white one I got on Friday?
Yes, because that's based on the recommendations of the finance committee, and everything is delineated by date and by how it was done, so you have a sequence of everything that transpired.
Because they met on Monday at four thirty, we got this on Friday.
Right, they met, we met Friday at four thirty.
Right, but when I left here last week, I was gonna be questioning, the board, the budget report we were getting on Friday was going to be before the finance committee, and then the sheet that I got, the email was gonna be the difference.
And that's what it did, it represented all those.
Yeah, so you could've, you could've made the adjustments on your white, but we did it with the green tonight, so that folks may have to do that.
Okay, so, all right, so if I was to look at this, sorry, mine is all white, but, um, this budget analysis, okay, and I wanna find the hundred thousand, where do I find it?
That would be under administration, eleven triple zero two forty, which would be around forty-six. Page fourteen. Page fourteen shows it that it was restored by the finance committee on three nineteen ten. They restored the other side.
No, but is it on here? On this sheet?
No, it's not on there, because it wasn't a cut, it was accepted.
It wasn't cut, it was restored.
Right, but I was under the impression that these two reports were supposed to equal the budget, but that's not true, then?
Well, there, there are some things that they restored that probably did not get reported.
The only, the only difference between the white printout that Phyllis has from Friday night is the administrator, full-day kindergarten, the middle school sports program, arts high school, the sixty, a forty thousand dollar differential of textbooks, and the one hundred thousand dollars for utilities. That's the only changes that we made as a finance committee.
And that was emailed to the board.
Well, those, the items that she, that they restored were not.
They were not.
Right.
Unfortunately, the items that were restored were not sent to the board.
If you need us to walk it, we can go through, I mean, as I said, it was only five or six items that we touched.
Five or six items.
Okay, can you just, so I can write them down?
We, the difference between the whites and the greens is, we restore the full-day kindergarten.
I have it.
You got it, okay.
You got the hundred thousand for the administration. Go to page, uh, go to page thirty-nine, you'll see four hundred and five thousand for the kindergarten restored. I got it.
Four hundred and five?
Four hundred and five, yes. Uh, you go back one page to page thirty-eight, I'm sorry, two pages, to thirty-seven, you'll see that they restored, um, on the health benefits, the finance committee restored the ninety thousand dollars for the health benefits related to that. Jump all the way back to eleven four oh one, page fifty-six. You'll see the restoration of fourteen thousand for the co-curricular, eleven four oh one, Page fifty-nine, the restoration of forty-eight thousand dollars for the middle school sports. Page one, the twenty-four thousand dollars for the arts high school. And the only other difference would be eleven, one ninety, one hundred, six forty, twenty-one, and thirty-one, I believe, were the other changes, which are on page... Page forty-nine has fifteen thousand dollars restored, and page fifty has twenty-five thousand dollars restored.
Where's what I'm thinking?
Twenty-five thousand.
Where is it?
Uh, eleven, one ninety, one hundred, six forty, thirty-one.
I have a page thirteen, twelve and thirteen? Page twelve and thirteen, you have, um, a forty thousand dollars for a referendum, I'm assuming this is for the solar energy?
For the solar energy, yes, largely for that.
And it says nine, so that means, that's September? I'm assuming you're planning a September referendum?
That was the board's, that was the board's goal, to try and make a September referendum.
Okay, 'cause there's, and then there's a six thousand cost on the previous page. What I would like to recommend is that we postpone that referendum and do it in April, so that we don't have to pay that extra cost. I, I think the odds of us passing a referendum in this climate are probably very soon, especially if we don't pass this budget. I don't see how, um, and I understand that the concept of, that we need the solar power, and it shouldn't really cost any money, but I, I think that's gonna be a difficult sell to the public, and, and I think that's a lot of money to spend on a referendum.
We think, what, we, we talked about this in, in depth, of the solar panel.
I have two, yeah, number one, it's investment, number two, when we delay things by a month, it turns into almost a year delay, just simply because of getting architects back together and, and all of the paperwork that needs to be completed, so it's not as simple as going from September to April.
What are our referendum dates? September, December, January?
March. March.
March and in April.
And April. And, and if you recall, we, we even discussed that the September one might be too tight anyway. We were, September is what we're shooting for. We have the architects working diligently to try and get us to that date.
And that will also be considered a roofing issue as well.
Well, absolutely, that's part of what we're looking at, is our roofing.
And I'm gonna put solar panels on roofs we haven't repaired yet. Anything else, Mr. D?
Yeah.
Ma'am?
Page thirty-three, um, uh, this was a restoration, late buses, forty thousand dollars?
Can you talk a little louder so folks can hear what you're saying?
Forty thousand dollars in late buses, did we cut out the late buses?
Uh, no, what we're doing is, late buses are only gonna be available for after-school detention. They will not be available for co-curricular and athletic programs.
That's another thing that the five minutes committee talked about, that the late buses. Some decision was made to leave them available for those kids that we mandate stay after.
Is this for all schools? Is that, that goes across every school? It's not just like the high school?
Nope.
Well, it's mainly the high school and middle school.
Most of those are the two, yeah.
The middle school.
And the middle school.
Yeah.
Just the high school and the middle school, I think.
Correct.
These are five, these are six o'clock buses.
Six o'clock buses? Yeah, six o'clock buses?
The late, late buses.
Not the four o'clock, though, late regular, oh, it's not the regular late bus?
Not, it's the.
No, that's.
The regular late bus is for detention.
Okay.
Which is four o'clock.
Which is four o'clock, so there's still gonna be a four o'clock bus?
For detention.
So if you don't have detention, but you stayed after, can you get on this bus?
No.
For extra help.
And extra help.
Middle school for extra help, that's what we're doing.
Extra help. And.
And detention.
Critical extra credit.
And if you look on page thirty-one, I know how, um, it's not going. We, um, you went through all those contractual numbers for seven hundred thousand dollars. And now you see all these, the bus drivers, bus driver, all those bus drivers. How come those numbers weren't changed, but everything else is changed?
I didn't change them, because at this point in time, um, they were too, they fluctuate up and down too, too much based on the needs, and the dollar value wasn't generating much money, so I just left them at their current numbers.
We, the bus drivers are contractual too, in the contract?
Yes, but I didn't, when I forecasted it out, I, their dollar value forecasted for wasn't significant enough to make that basic change. To the overtime, extracurricular, and all that, I just left it.
And page forty, there is, um, I might assume the page numbers are the same in the white?
Yeah, they should basically be the same.
Page forty, um, there's a line called special activities for twenty thousand dollars.
Uh, those are after-school programs. I believe we charge, um, part of the PSAT there, and other, and other activities that go on at the high school during the year, so that there's a place to allocate those expenses. And I, they may also be part of the detention money that goes in there, for side of the detention, I believe.
Okay, so is that a salary line?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay. One of the, I'm gonna just point this out, one of the overriding problems that I have in general, and I, and I'm not saying that this wasn't a difficult budget to prepare, with some of these numbers, and I'm, I'm just gonna, if you just look at page fifty-one, like, well, this is. If you look at page fifty-one, and you see, do you know other objects U E S, there's a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Do you know what's in there? I was under the assumption this was this year, but since it was a year ago, I guess, I don't know.
Other objects U E S twenty-one thousand?
That's the two thousand nine orders, what did we do in two thousand nine?
That was mainly the, the reading manipulance.
Okay, because I thought this was last year, I thought it was this year, so I don't know.
That's the reading manipulance.
Page fifty-five, V S, brand supplies, what is that?
Basic skills.
Basic skills.
What did it read?
That's not my line.
And do you know why we have such a big increase there?
I think we normally budget around twelve, and it depends on what the programs run, and they expand against it.
You also have, and Catherine Allen might be able to help us out in there, don't the A S I teachers now have the remedial materials from the new reading series that they use in the A S I classes?
They do, yeah.
So that's those materials.
Right, and I know, and we go back to my first question, page fourteen, thirteen, where are those administrators dollars were? I, I, I firmly believe in this climate, we're gonna have a tough time passing this budget. And, and let's just say that this budget goes to the council. And if I look at some of these numbers, and, and I'm just, if you look at the supplies in general, the, the library supplies, you know, the classroom supplies, the technology supplies, if you look at even some of the numbers, at how far the actuals were running over budget currently, and the numbers are getting cut so low, even beyond even the paper line, I mean, that was even cut again, and we know we've had a paper problem. My concern here is our reality versus a budget, and this does not really seem that doable, that this really will reflect reality. And you know if this goes to the council, it's gonna get cut again, these, these line items. And we have an administrator retiring, I would like to see us cut a position on the administrative line. Since, and instead of filling the position before we get even cut any further. Because once we fill these jobs, it's gotten more difficult to cut. And, and I hate to go.
Well, that's not that, that's not the one. The person retiring is not on that line item.
I don't care what line item.
No, no, this is, you said administrator, I'm thinking which administrator, but that's not part of that line item. That's a separate line item.
And isn't that a supervisor, that's?
That's a supervisor position, yeah.
A supervisor is not an administrator, supervisor administrator.
Well, um, finance committee spoke about this, that was one of the items that were on air, and it's one of the items that the finance committee put back in the budget. The issue of, you know, we prepare our budget, and that was our philosophy, that we think is, cub is a service that we wanna provide. We came out with this number. Is the budget gonna go down? If I look at the history and the data of, go back twenty years, and I, you know, my little knowledge of probabilities, I, I would say that that's likely. Um, will it go down if it's forty dollars, will it go down if it's thirty dollars, it may go down if it's ten dollars?
It may go down if it's zero.
It may go down if it's zero. So then why would I want a budget to, a number that I think is gonna pass, if it's not gonna pass anyway, and decimate the school district, and then the council is still gonna cut? So we have a budget here, and, and I have, you know, my issues, and I know the council took a hit too, um, with the cut to aid the municipalities, but I'm not gonna formulate a budget for the school district based on what the county, what the council's gonna do. Okay, these guys cut the budget every year, and now they, now, now they're gonna come to task, because I'm gonna make it very clear to them that if this budget goes down, and we face them, that if they cut the budget, this is what we're gonna take out. Let them be the bad guys. They're entitled to being the bad guys, entitled to playing ball, um, to say, hey, you know, we're gonna cut these things out, and you guys need to figure out how to do that without, not happening.
Right, and I understand that, but that would've been the, the reverse of what I was trying to say. What I was trying to say is, here, we've cut the supply budget to such a bare bone, that I don't really think that it might be realistic. Yet, if you go, and you, if we're gonna go under the premise that the budget's gonna fail, and the council's going to cut, if we've already removed that administrator line and, and put it into the supply line, they wouldn't have that to cut. But either way, I mean, they, they could cut what they want, we don't have to abide by what they cut, I mean, they will cut.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a teacher, supplies, I don't, I don't get the supply, I don't give my, my. Let's look at paper, you mentioned paper. And I had this conversation with Dr. Alfon about paper. I, I couldn't, I could live with a, a box of paper for the year. You give me five thousand sheets of paper, I'm happy. I'll probably have some leftover to make paper airplanes. Um, everybody gets a box of paper, that's it. Here's your paper, and you give X number of boxes to the supervisors, and if you need paper, you gotta go justify it to the boss. That's my feeling about papers. We're in electronics age right now. I know some grades, if you're in kindergarten, you're probably making more copies of stuff than if you're in twelfth grade. I got you. But this is a budget, and, you know, we, we took a cut. So you come in, first day, you do your staff training, you get your key, you have a cup of coffee, here's your box of paper, take it to your room. That's it. Yeah, I know when you go into high school, and you have a tendency, and I'm guilty of this myself, where I work, and you see paper from the ceiling, oh, we got plenty of paper. Okay, there, there's money to be saved, and I think, was it ninety thousand dollars in paper last year? That's a lot of money. Paper, so hey, use it sparingly. I know Dr. Alfon, every time he sends me something, I don't know which side is which, and stuff on both sides, cut in half, and, I mean, we need to be more frugal with those things that we do. You know, we cut those things. Now, the principals are here, um, you recommended these cuts of supplies. Um, you know, what do we talk about supplies? Are we, are we not gonna be able to meet the mission and the budget with the cuts that we have in this budget? Anybody speak out?
Are all of them confident, Dr. Alfon, that they, that they will be able to sustain these cuts?
Well, they're here for a reason, I mean, I could hear from the principals.
Well, I, I'll refer to that, but I will tell you, we made a conscious decision. Do you want staff? Something that we were very concerned, that Mike said, in, in, in the lower grades, and we wanted to keep the integrity of that, because, you know, the certain, and then maybe we don't use consumables every year, like, we're talking in Ed's building, rather than using consumables every year, we might use them every other year, every three years, and kids will might be able to write in their notebooks and stuff like that, which could save a significant amount of money.
Principals have meetings together, and, and you can water them, you know, if you're out of supplies, and somebody has a surplus in another school, hey, I give you a box of food sticks for some of your parents, and, you know, I mean, this is what it is, we're gonna spend a, a, an X amount of money on supplies and, and make it work.
You would be surprised, right now, how many administrators go to Staples on their own, with their own cash, and buy their stuff.
And you know if you're teaching.
And I know they do.
And you know if you're teaching, you can deduct two hundred dollars on the ten forty-eight top side.
They spend that a week.
Just keep their receipts.
Mr. Mackin, may I ask Ms. Ballen, who is the director of curriculum instruction, to address that? So that we, we did discuss this as a group, we did meet, so.
I think, first of all, I wanna say that we worked beautifully together. This was not easy, none of us, you know, all just, all of us understood the situation we were in. We all felt that we all had to work together, and as, I like what you said, Mr. Mackin, we will help each other, we've always done that, but even, we'll help each other even more in this case. And we feel that we can simply keep consistently watching what we're using, and try to work with that, what we have, and keep it at that level, so that we don't have to lose our staff. We don't, no one wants to lose our staff. They're, they're critical to what we need in our classrooms for our children, to give them optimum learning. And, and we decided that we could work with, within the confines of what our limitations are going to be.
And it's my understanding, when we went through these numbers, look at what we spent last year, look what we have in, um, inventory still, and when we made the cut, are we gonna have a problem come, let's say, April, and a teacher goes to the chalkboard and no chalk will be had? Is that gonna happen? Okay. So never any else we could work on. Uh, you know, inkjet cartridges, all those types of things, we just, just have to conserve. And if we get these emergency situations, we'll deal with it.
I think, though, the point was, and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but not that there was a question about the supplies, but if the council looks at this, they're not gonna go after supplies publicly, but they will go after a position.
Well, the council, no, 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 let's stop it. The council's gonna say, you need to reduce your budget by X amount of money. The council, there's nobody sitting up there.
No, 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 I'm not saying, but if there's nobody in that position, and they're going to retire you, they're not gonna touch the kids. You know they're not gonna do that.
They're not doing it, they're just gonna give us a figure, and we're gonna apply it, well, we wanna apply it.
Well, yeah, not necessarily, they don't, they have to give you a line item.
They have to do it down.
They have to, that's why.
And we can say, thank you, we'll take a look at it.
And that's all you have to do.
I just think what you're saying, say through, put it, that money there.
I just think that we are cutting these lines, if you look at, at these numbers year over year, there's many of these lines that are, are going over budget continually. Like, where does that, I mean, and then what happens, you have to draw from another line. We are, we are so tight this year, we're not gonna have money in another line to pull it from. Right, but, and that is, right, but I'm sure you'd find another district that might be cutting an administrator position to free up that hundred thousand for supplies too. I mean, you don't know the exact line numbers other districts are cutting, so, and it's not relevant to me what other districts are doing anyway. I, I just really care about here, I'm not gonna go looking through other districts, line by line budgets, it's not worth it.
I'm really glad you finally said this budget is tight.
I mean, I don't, it is tight, I'm not.
I'm fifteen years, I hear you saying that the budget is tight. I hope there's a reporter here who can quote that tonight.
Budget is one thing, but a budget really, I mean, a budget is supposed to be made to reflect reality. And, I mean, there's, I also, would also take more money than that two percent out of surplus, because every year that I've sat here, those projections have been wrong. And even last year, we cut, our projection was one point two five percent, and we came in over two. So, and that's one thing we've, and we even left money on the table for Christie to take from this year, which I have a problem that we did. And I think we would have the same thing. We may have only had a half a million, and other districts might've had fifteen, so we were better, but that half a million is still means something to me, whether another district had more or what.
The unknowns that we shared at the finance committee.
Yes, you may, thank you, sir.
Um, some of the things that are included in this projection is, we currently have five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars budgeted this year and next year for extraordinary aid. We don't know if that money's actually even gonna come in. So that's five hundred and twenty-six that remains in this year's budget and next year. We were fortunate, last year, we received over nine hundred thousand dollars in extraordinary aid. So that was part of the big excess that we received last year.
And where is the number on here, that?
That's part of the state aid number.
Part of the eighteen?
Yes, part of the eighteen reflects five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which we may or may not get. So if we don't get that, that's gonna hurt us.
When will you know?
Last year, last year we got, last year we got the letter on the day of the council meeting.
But I thought last year they changed that timeframe, remember?
They, everything at the state is up in the air. I mean, we got the letter the day before we met with the council. Currently, in here, uh, there is money that the state is hitting us, well, before I get to that, there's six, we're absorbing six hundred thousand dollars of the current year state aid loss, out of this pocket of money also. So yes, I mean, numbers come in, will we have breakage at the end of the year? One of the biggest items that is the toughest part to predict is special services with these kids that are out of district, and some of their extraordinary services. Now, if you get a child that's get, gets sick, and he's not in school, and he has a one-to-one nurse with him on a daily basis, that is a significant savings if that kid is out of school for two weeks. Those things are, are not things we're able to determine at this point in time. So we have six hundred thousand dollars that we're absorbing in state aid. And then, on top of the three point seven, and I know when I spoke to Mr. Syak, he was surprised to hear it, they have now hit us with a school development authority assessment. On the bottom of one sheet, they said, you must budget two hundred and nine thousand dollars as an assessment for, for utilizing the, uh, school development authority. So they're penalizing us, because we actually went out and applied for the grants that they asked us to do. So what we're doing is, I'm anticipating the money that we're gonna generate from the school development authorities of two hundred and nine thousand, and I'm just appropriating it all back out. So at this point, we depleted all that money, we're depleting all of our capital reserve, we're depleting every ounce of maintenance, I'm leaving it out.
Where's the two oh nine on here, is that the eighteen too?
That's in the twelve, the twelve accounts at the back of the budget. Probably appear somewhere around page sixty-four.
Page sixty-three on the bottom.
Is it all the way at the bottom, sixty-three? Yes, there you go, sixty-three. Two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So that wasn't even made public. That was like a, a little sneak in, that you had to read at the bottom of a page, wasn't part of any calculations. So agree with you, things are gonna be tight, but it's gonna take the effort of everybody in this room, of this administrative staff, to work together to make sure that we control it to the best of our abilities, and hope that we don't get anything major that comes up. And, and the board discussed the two percent, they wanted to go to that number, they, they felt it was a comfortable number. Every district feels differently about that, and we have to work it through. I mean, two point seven million dollars out of this surplus. If you ask me today, I have no idea where we're generating that for next year.
I remember a couple of board presidents over the last couple of days, just people that I know, and, and, every one of them was running the cap. Four percent cap. Now, if we went to four percent cap, what would that number be? I know we, some of my working papers in there.
Roughly, you know, it's six hundred thousand.
But on the tax rate?
It's about eighty.
One hundred and twenty, yeah.
Another what?
You'd be around one twenty.
And we could've easily went to cap, but we've made a conscious effort not to do that when we go to this budget, and I think we're at two point nine seven.
We actually could've gone beyond cap, because state law, there's an exception in state law that allows you to make up state aid losses. So we could've taken.
You can go to your cap and request a way.
That's what the district that you quoted, has a six hundred dollar tax increase.
Well, they're levying it all on the tax pay.
Right, but we can't do that.
Ms. Baco, any, any other questions?
Page twenty-five, there's eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars in there.
That was cut.
Yeah, what was it for?
Relocating, currently, we have special services and the business office that sit at the back of the building. We were going to bring everybody up to the front of the building and basically shut down the back of the building at this point in time.
So it was a move within this building?
Move within this building. All the tech, all the hard, hard wiring, server, not servers, possible server switches, things needed to transfer everybody from the back door.
Would that save money, like, in heat or anything?
Yes, lights.
Barely.
Now, we have lights on in all the hallways, we would have, everyone would have come forward, we would, you know, generally, yes, it would save you money, but it's also the fact that half of the offices are here, and the other half are down at the back end of the building.
And some of it will require additional electrical work.
Well, the electrical work is a whole other story, yes.
Page eighteen, there's one, there's a thing called bidding package, what is that for? Is that a computer?
That's the Ed Data, Ed Data Services that we use. We currently use that for all our purchasing, and we're currently utilizing it for a lot of maintenance requirements, and it saves us the headache of having to bid or solicit quotes all from different people. Ed Data does it on a yearly basis, and currently, Ed Data is doing it for the whole Middlesex County. Not only are they state, but they have a specific bidding requirement for us here in Middlesex County, through the Ed Services Commission.
Refinish high school dance studio, is that the new studio? Is this a yearly cost? Is that the new dance?
No, it's not a yearly cost. What we're, what we're doing is, with Ms. Papaglione, we're going to rotate the hardwood floors throughout the district that are requiring to be refinished on a yearly basis. The goal is, is trying to get to everyone, every three years, Dennis? That's right. Every three years, except for the middle school and high school, which take the biggest brunt of the abuse, to get them done on a yearly basis.
Are we still paying like twenty-five thousand to educate people in East Jersey State Prison?
Forty-some thousand.
Forty thousand we're paying for East Jersey State Prison educating, we're spending eight thousand for our kids. That's a travesty.
Forty thousand, one ninety-nine.
Mr. Vashad, you're unusually quiet.
I'm listening, I'm listening, I'm waiting for Mrs. Backo to finish. Because, Mr. McEnroe, I'll tell you, I'm one of the very conservative ones at spending your money. He's said that to me several times.
Glad to put you on the Finance Committee.
You know, there's issues that we brought up in our committees and all, about, I made several suggestions that I won't go into right now about how to eliminate some of the thing, you know, to bring the cost down and all that. But, one of the issues that bothered me the most was trying, even considering cutting, a lot of people may think I'm wrong, but cutting kindergarten to half-days. All right? First of all, I checked, my wife was a teacher in this district for twenty years. Second of all, I checked with other teachers outside this district that I know personally, and they all told me, it's developmental, that's a developmental period for a child getting acclimated to go into the education that they're going to pursue, or get, rather. Half-day kindergarten would actually not benefit these students going forward into first grade, second grade, third grade, they'd actually be developmentally behind. So I couldn't see cutting half-day kindergarten. We mentioned about courtesy busing. Our students and our children are more important, that we protect them instead of worrying about going across the damn street and getting hit by a car. We've had that incident in town, I don't know how many times, there was a young girl from the high school two years ago, lost her life down Lower Serval. You know yourself, I've raised two sons, people that have children know that sometimes children don't think and they run out, they do things that are stupid. Child safety is more important to me than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I made, I made a comment about the stud tread, tread wells one night in the high school about how to repair it. One accident is one too many, you know? You know, I'm, I would have loved to come back to the board to be very, I really would in this time, because, you know, and, you know, it's been brought to my attention by many people, you know, like, I took an oath to serve the students of this town, and I was sworn in on the Board of Education, and I, you know, if we, if we have to raise taxes to maintain that level, I'm sorry, you know, it's, it's going to have to be, you know? I can't worry about what the budget's going to, if it's going to be, if it is the deed that what the council's going to chop, we'll make the adjustments in that. I've been doing this, this is my fourth year on the Finance Committee, you know, and each year it's gotten a little bit harder. I was asked to be on it, I didn't volunteer, and, you know, I'm doing the best I can with this, and I just, just hope everyone realizes that, you know, it's, when you sit down and you start playing numbers, it's not a fun game, you know, that our administration, the supervisors, and even the staff know it's not fun playing games, you know, trying to balance our, even our home budgets and all that. And when I'm working with other people's money to try to educate the students of Serval, I take it as a personal responsibility that I'm trying to do, and I will do the right thing for them.
Any other board questions?
I have one other question, a finance question. The referendum, do you know the projected balance left for the high school, including the two point two?
Talking about the two point two, what's left over?
We were talking at the one meeting, five hundred thousand, and depends on what projects the board wishes to do, to bring that down.
Okay, so, do we have an idea, do we go like through legal and find out what we can do or what we can't do?
Yeah, we've been discussing that with the, the board and the Oversight Committee. Right now, the biggest project that we're looking at is the auditorium.
Okay, so, that money can be used as, and it doesn't have to be returned, is that what you're saying?
Well, as long as related to the project.
Remember, Sam said we had to return it, we use that every year.
Well, because you had nothing else to do with the project. It has to be related to the project in order to use it.
So, the plan is not to return any of that back to the taxpayer?
That was the direction I received from the board, to try and use every penny of it on projects related.
Right, so, we can, we can do the high school auditorium for that two hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, it was an alternate at the beginning of the project.
Right, and the other, there were a few other alternates there.
Right, but at this point, we, we're not doing any of those.
We prioritize, and that was one of the items in the stairs, the treads on the stairwells.
Stair treads, and that's postponed for other reasons.
Right, so, anything that was an alternate is okay for us to use the money?
An alternate or a result, a result of damage from reconstruction, the stair treads would be in one of those, because we had construction items up and down those stairs, those stair treads really took a beating. Ceiling tiles and things of that nature that had to be removed, that were not initially to be removed, got damaged because of the work that had to be done, so, there is a few items.
And each of those projects would come back for the board for formal approval, so if there's something that.
You have to, I can't just, yeah.
Right, so if there's something that the board doesn't wish to do, and wishes to return the remaining funds, we still have the opportunity to do that?
Yeah, because I don't know if I would agree on, on spending all of that, all of that two point two million, but surely, my opinion, that.
Well, it's not two point two, it's five hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, the five hundred thousand, you're right, sorry. But surely, the auditorium, but I have another question for you about, what does it cost, what would it cost for the referendum if we do it in September or December?
That's the forty thousand for the elections and six thousand roughly for advertising.
So forty-six thousand?
Basically, yes.
Okay. I have another question. I've been hanging out with Phyllis a little bit. On page eighteen, there's a water cooler, it's a thousand dollars.
District why we have water coolers, that are directly connected to our water supply, that has a filtration.
That have what, I'm sorry?
A filtration system, so that the water is directly coming from there instead of water bottles.
Okay, so it's not like from Deer Park, it's not deliveries Deer Park?
Right, we connect it to our water system.
We got rid of that years ago.
Because of the same concerns.
Uh-huh, okay. And the forty thousand dollars for the early, I guess I'll say for the late buses, it's, we shouldn't consider cutting that?
That was a discussion at the Finance Committee, they, they felt forty thousand was deep enough, and the remaining sixty was more or less a requirement because of the detention.
For detention, you have to bus them home.
You have to bus them home?
If we mandate, they say, we must provide transportation.
Well, if we, if we bus the student to school in the morning, because they're outside the mileage requirement for courtesy busing, so they get busing from the state mandated busing, and you take them to school, now if you keep them for detention, you got to bus them.
Guys, it's just detention.
I understand, we're just using that, now, I have a problem with busing kids for detention. I think if the parents had to pick them up, okay, that might help the detention rate.
So how to walk home?
Not my call. But we talked about that, and the late buses for the sports programs, if kids stay after and play sports, you know, I think that's a time the parents would pick them up. And we've all done that, yes.
Mr. McEnroe, just for, I'm, I'm the Chairman of Buildings and Grounds, and one of the issues that Mr. Syak had mentioned earlier about, over the years, we've started to make capital improvements in the district, roofs, you know, different repairs that had to be done. It bothers me that we had to give up nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars to repair the roof at the middle school. It's, it's one of the things that we try to have a continuous going forward of repairing our facilities, which for many years have just dilapidated, and basically, we're going to use the Band-Aid again, we did it on the, in the high school on the L Wing, we're going to have to do the Band-Aid again for two thousand ten, eleven, at the middle school library. And Ms. Chakubik is here, am I correct? She stepped out. You know the story down there with the garbage can holding, when the water leaks in there.
It's amazing.
You know, but, again, you know, it bothers me is, is the fact that, you know, we don't have the money to fix it this year. And the other thing that Mrs. Backo brought up, about forty thousand, I'll be very honest with you, I agree with her on that, about going forward with the referendum in the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven year for capital, for the solar, et cetera. We'll have a report, I would suggest that, along with her, that we delay that in maybe into two thousand eleven, two thousand, two thousand twelve budget.
How much money did we put out of that? Because I, I'm leaning that way also. So how much money have we put out of it, Emilio?
Not much at this point in time, but you signed a contract with a gentleman, he's, Dennis, you know better than I, he's been. We just completed our survey of the entire district of our roof. We're expecting to have a report very shortly thereafter.
So what, what does that cost? What, will that have cost?
I believe that was a forty thousand dollar bill coming through, Andrew.
That's a good enough estimate.
Okay, so it's about the same amount? But that's the nine, ten budget.
That's your nine ten.
Nine ten budget, right. Yeah, I, I think we should go ahead with the solar, I just wanted to do a bit to April. Right. So that we don't have to expend the fund. I, I think the solar is a good way to go. I just think the timing right now is bad.
Do you think that's a second referendum, a referendum question?
Well, we have no choice, to do a referendum, I mean, there's no other choice to do it, but I think it's going to be a very difficult sell in this climate, and I don't want to spend that kind of money on a referendum.
Do you think we can successfully communicate a referendum pitch at the same time we're doing the budget next year?
Right now, I don't think we could successfully pitch a referendum at all. I, I don't see that that's possible in this climate. And even though I know financially, I know it's the right thing to do, I don't foresee that pitch going at this point. I just, I don't want to expend money on a, on a sales pitch.
I'd just like to draw to what Mr. Limbo did, as most of the research, the last few referendums, that the school districts that have had referendums with solar energy or salt, some type of energy conservation, are seeing close to a ninety, ninety-five percent excess tax rate.
I think people realize the value in it, I don't, I don't.
You have to spend money to save money, and we'll be saving tons of money and doing the right thing for the environment, too.
Especially the way ours is going to be structured, and the public will see it, when it, when it comes to, when it, when it comes up to a referendum, that it virtually pays for itself. I could just go ahead with it.
Agreeing with what Mr. McEnroe, Mr. Limbo says, but, there's a thing right now, I don't know if you've read about it, with our state, is that the projects that the state said that they were going to give thirty, forty, fifty percent to on construction within districts, they don't have the money, and they're not going to do it. These districts that have signed up for these supposed state-sponsored type of projects of giving back, we'll say thirty percent, they really don't have the money right now. And our governor, I, believe me, on my gut feeling, is that if you start it, you'll pay for it. So that's why I, I would agree to hold back.
Solar energy never qualified for your SDA approval, so, it was not part of the SDA, then, your, your architects made that clear at their presentation.
But if we hadn't of the roofs and that, that we're going to apply for, we may not be able to receive the money from the state for the roofs. Say a roof is nine sixty, and we were getting forty percent back, that we may have to pay all that out of pocket, that's the point that I'm trying to make, not just solar, but the maintenance that has to be done.
I, I want to discuss that again. So that forty-six thousand dollars that we, that we already spent out of this year's budget, what will, if we decide to wait until April and we have to?
The feasibility study will only be there for us.
The feasibility study's paid for, it's basically paid for.
It's a forty, I believe it's a forty thousand dollar.
Forty plus the six.
As long as we proceed within a reasonable amount of time. So they assessed, they assessed all the roofs of the whole buildings.
So they wouldn't have to come back and assess them again, or take a quick assessment?
Well, the longer you wait.
You have to get them.
The longer you wait, you just take the chance, they may come out of this recession, and you may start seeing your costs escalate again if you come out of this.
And these ASRACs might be bought up by other districts.
See, the thing about doing construction now in this environment, although it sounds silly or ridiculous, is that money is cheap to go get if you're going to bond some, and number two is, labor costs are down because there aren't a lot of work, so that, that's the two issues.
Everything is on your side at this point.
Yeah. So. So what was the board's consensus on, on that referendum? We want to leave that for a high school Oversight Committee?
For a reconciliation, from them?
Well, for the, move the, high school Oversight Committee just about done.
What?
Just want to make that clear.
It's not going to be the solar.
The referendum. Form a new committee. Yeah, it has no impact, yeah.
The forty-six thousand dollars, in my mind, really has no real impact on this budget, and, and if the board decides at some point in time not to move ahead with it, you have plenty of time, it's forty-six thousand dollars that can go back into supplies, or something else that may come up during the year, so.
Make that decision.
It's not like the forty-six thousand dollars is going to have a major impact on this budget.
I also want to see the report of our roofs, because I know they're in terrible condition, so I want to see.
Any other, any other concerted questions from the board?
One more comment, and that's it, about the, about the supervisor that's retiring, I think we definitely need to replace that supervisor.
I think that's already been determined.
Okay.
I need something in it.
Any more comments, any more, ladies and gentlemen? Any more comments or questions for the board, if I open up the public?
Wait, I just have one. Can I get, can I get a report with the two thousand ten quarter numbers?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You want it emailed, or you want to pick it up?
No, I'll pick it up, I just would much rather compare those numbers, I thought this, I thought that's what I was doing.
Just let me know when the dominance comes.
If you generate, if you generate the report, and she picks up a hard copy, just email the rest of, just to allow the rest of us.
No other questions? I'll open up the public. Any other in the public? There's any comments or questions about what we discussed about the last hour and a half? Just please stay in your seat, state your name and address from the record and be heard. Anybody?
Okay.
Mr. Kilcombs.
No, we'll leave Mr. O'Grady first. It might be more pertinent.
Maybe more what? Say Freddie.
No.
Oh, perky.
Yeah, he's pretty typical.
He is.
Sorry, John O'Grady. Color coordination, this is great. I'm worse than you frankly, colors. Two big piles, two, the two big fat things. Uh, one I think is green and the other is pink. And I was expecting them to be a detailed breakdown of the other.
Now, one's a summary and one's the detail.
Right, yeah. Sixty-seven pages to break down of the 29. And just tell me what I'm missing, that when the last page of the pink one has the 09-010 budget, total funds of 92 million, and the green one has 75. There's got to be something big I'm missing.
Deep capital projects in one. And when I ran the, um, the justification, the green one, I did not go all the way through. When you notice it stopped at Fund 17, I did not run 20, 30, and 40 because there were, the justification of those, um, there really is no justification. Fund 20 is just an estimate of what you're going to receive. Fund 40 is principal and interest that really, at that point, I just didn't want to run any more paper because it really had no bearing on what the board was discussing.
On the blue page with Dr. Frank at the bottom, you referred to a little over 700K of contractual reductions. I just want to clarify, none of that 700 is listed above.
Correct, correct.
Right, but there are some potential contractual issues up there.
Right, right.
So the number you're really asking for contractual.
You'll be a little rough on.
Gotcha. Uh, yellow page. We get a little bit on every color. In the top half, under appropriations on debt service, uh, I know it's all a good thing, but can you just explain that what happened? That our debt was 6 million and now it's 3.8?
The upper elementary school, the 2.2 million, that was directly used to fund the 2.2 million high school referendum. We had a one-time payment.
And, uh, I think I'll get one. When you refer to cutting 3.7, right on the summary of front and back blue, you're referring of cutting it from what? The workshop, workshop preliminary budget that the finance committee put together?
And the one that was presented at, at the meeting a while back that you were.
Okay, yeah.
The double.
Yeah, so it was.
Requested, you called it requested budget?
It was a preliminary budget and that's where the cuts were. So these things got put in. Now I'll just prove my endurance. I'm sitting here and I've got to be missing something, but every time I miss something big, you clarify and it's good. This year, in the 9-10 current operating budget, you're pretty close to going to spend 81.2 million, give or take that 2, 3%, whatever. And you're forecasting in the next budget, 10-11, to spend 77 and a half. You know, I'm thinking like in my house. You know, if I needed $82 to do something one year. On the total appropriations line on the yellow.
You got 81, 214.
81.2 and 77.5.
So he's including the debts.
Okay. I'm just going to talk out loud and you'll tell me where I'm wrong. If you needed 81.2 million dollars of our money to operate this current school year, and you're saying you only need 77.5 to operate it in the 09-10 world, I'm translating it into my income and my budget. If I need less to operate, I'm not going to my boss for a raise. So just explain to me why we're asking for a tax increase. I know I'm missing something here.
You have to go up to the current fund. As you said, the 2.2 million dollars, the biggest decrease of that is the debt service, which was a one-time thing. So really look at the total current fund because that's the fund that we operate out of. Debt service is.
So that's $100 increase in the operating fund.
Operating fund actually decreased 1.5 million.
But the operating fund, I got an operating fund increase.
On the yellow sheet, 75 to 32, 601.
He, he's on the current fund line, John. Okay?
The total current.
The total current fund.
Current fund go over and it becomes 1.5 million dollar decrease.
In the dollars you need to run the town.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, whatever the numbers are, they are. But the concept is, I'm missing the concept. You need, you need less to operate. You need less to operate, however, look down to what's subsidizing that and look at state aid. State aid is down 3.7 million. So our expenses are down 1.5, but our revenue is off 3.7. We've got to make it up through those other sources. And you see the other sources listed there.
And the biggest part of that makeup.
It was an explanation. Yeah, I just got lost on the old guy.
And the biggest part of that makeup is $2 million in capital projects.
I thought that could, which may be a good short-term thing, but maybe not a good long-term thing as Tom and his roof is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Grady. Mrs. Kilcombs.
On the blue sheet, this is not replacing a P E teacher at the high school. The fifth teacher makes $90,000, one teacher.
With benefits.
Oh, that includes the benefits, same. I had trouble understanding the contractual reductions also for 718,000. That seems an awful lot.
Basically, I received direction from the board as to how much to budget for, for contractual obligations. The first time out, they gave me one number. When we got to the latter part of the finance committee, specifically after getting 3.8 million, they said to use a different number. So that's the differential between the first time and the second time through.
On page 11, we have legal services. Do you agree? Yes, that's all I had is agreeing. I don't have the wish. It seems to be an increase of $40,000 and then it's reduced. 2009, the cost was 110,432. And the adjusted budget was 150,000. And now the budget that we're approving is 110,000. Could you explain the difference?
We're just not, we're not reaching out to our attorneys. Mrs. Duffy and the special services department has been doing a great job negotiating a lot of our special ed so that we're not going to due process administratively. We're not reaching out to the attorneys to do a lot of the things or the research. We're doing it on our own. And it's probably estimated this year, we might even come in under $100,000 in legal fees at this point in time because collectively, the administration is just doing more research and doing a better job of keeping things out of the courts.
It's codified in state law too now, preventing a lot of boards to seek legal counsel.
Does that cover our, what do we call it? I know you haven't been at board meetings while, but we don't have the attorney at the public meetings anymore. We eliminated that because I didn't think that was useful.
He's only in closed session prior to. For advice. So apparently, we're not attempting to recoup the money lost on the construction?
Yes, we are. That's in negotiations right now. We actually had a meeting with the principal of the contracting firm, the big guy, the C in RSE. And we sat across the table and we've had some discussions. We are going to have Bill, what's Bill's, Bill Litten, Bill, come in and, and talk to us in public about his rationale. And he's also done some researches of some other cases that just were settled after 10-year litigation. So we're looking at that. The bottom line, Barbara, and I know you've been involved with this because I know the individual is standing right where Mr. Fentlano is standing. And we brought that up. And we're going to, we're going to make a, a business decision here. And we're going to look at, you know, what numbers that they're liable for and what it's going to cost us to litigate it. We're going to make a business decision. We're not at that point yet, but we are in negotiations.
Because I recall at the time when it was admitted, the errors and the omissions, and I questioned the board about recouping it and you said you would wait for the project to be completed.
Right, because you don't know what else they would screw up. I mean, omit.
So, I mean, this is like the taxpayers' dollar. If I had a faulty contractor there and I didn't get the bank for my buck, I mean, you know.
You and I are a 100% agreement on this.
And you polled the board and we all said we would, in public, on.
And I've said that.
I mean, I don't want to cost the taxpayers money in litigation, don't get me wrong. I'm not a firm believer of looking for litigation and wasting money.
We are owed. There's no doubt about that. But if, if I'm going to pursue, let's say, $100,000 at a cost of $212,000, I don't think you'd be patting me on the back. And that's, and we don't know that yet.
Okay.
So that, and that's what we're trying to get our hands around.
My next comment is probably sensitive, but because I do not like to see anyone lose their position, lose their jobs, whatever. But all I heard was Dr. Alfano say, cutting staff, cutting staff. Not once did he mention looking if we could possibly eliminate administrators. I looked, we have six principals, six assistant principals, um, the positions, department heads. And what really brought me to this eye-opener was attending, seeing all of the names of the children when they had the ad hoc board meeting with the upper elementary school, children, and who they represented.
Yes.
And I have a comment about that as well. I thought it was an eye-opener to see how many people that they were all representing, which was all management, which was quite a bit. So, I mean, I remember in the past where if they were busy, I mean, they had, when I went to school, 50 years ago, we didn't have assistant principals. When my children went to school, they had assistant principals. And, and you could check this even with Mr. Dill. If they were busy and if they were, they substituted for teachers, they substituted, they picked and worked at a class, one class, they pitched in. So if we're going to look, I just feel it's not just the staff, the classroom sizes, it's also administration.
No, when we say staff, we don't mean just teachers. We're talking about every other that's an employee of the school district. I, um, I can't disassociate administrators with the educational process. One thing, I, I talk to my fellow board members, I'm the only one on the board who actually goes into high school and works every day. And it's very similar to this district in far as district factor group and the problems that you would see in a high school. And they have three vice principals in high school, just to give you an example. And I work for one of them. I, I can never get to see him. And when I do get to see him, all the kids are lined up, the parents. It's a shame that we need assistant principals. And when you went to school, you're right, there was a lot more involvement, I think, with family. I think a lot of the children shared the same last name with their parents. That's not the case in our schools today. And if I did not work in a high school every day, I would share your comments. But I see day in, day out. And, and we made a move here. When I first came on the board, I said, you know, we've got assistant principals that are doing discipline every day. And we incorporated this dean of discipline because my deal, your feeling, and we, to the principals, they're not just doing the discipline. They're also doing observations in the classroom, they're mentoring teachers and all those types of things. And, and I said, I can't separate those from, I know they're, they're not in the classroom teaching, but they're administering the building. When you look at the, the elementary schools, I always point this out with a 1D, you know, I look at administrators as first responders to the building. When the doors are locked and the school buses drive away and the parents go to work, they're the first responders in that building if something happens. You know, so to, to take administrators out, and if you look, and I know I, I referred to the school report card, but I look at that, we're one of the lowest districts in ratio of administrators. And I asked Kevin this question, he's been around, he, he attended the school. In the main building here, what we call the headquarters, you have four main administrators. You have a superintendent, assistant superintendent, a BA, and you have a director of research and planning. That's four people. How many were there?
When I first, when I first got on the board, there were four people. An assistant business administrator, a business administrator, an assistant superintendent, and a superintendent. So all we've done is traded an assistant BA for a director of research and planning.
Right, so we still have four, but our student population probably has doubled in that, in that timeframe, so.
To be exact, administrator to student ratio comparable districts, we're 10th from the bottom in the state.
If you throw a rock in Old Bridge, you'll hit an administrator.
And, and the other comment that I made at the finance committee was, believe me, if I thought for a second that we could take out one administrator and improve our credibility as a board and have no one ever come back to us again and say, you've got too many administrators, I would do it. Because I think the credibility factor would be huge. But it's not going to stop there. We're going to take out one administrator and then the following meeting, it's going to be, well, you've got too many people over here or you've got too many people over there. So the question I posed to the finance committee was, do we truly believe, does the data show that we have too many administrators in this district? And the answer was, no. And I said, well, if it's not going to solve a credibility problem for us, and it's not reality that we have too many people, why are we going to do it?
Going to practice bleeding.
Not to mention the fact that these are the same people who are achieving for us in addition to the teachers, AYP and all of the.
Okay, Mr. Syak, it's my dime. I know, I've listened and I heard this story before.
That means speak live.
Another question, another comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Is aids, aids in classrooms.
Yes.
Are we required by state? Is it a state law? Because when I question other school systems and it seems like we have an abundance of aids. And many teachers say they're tripping over each other too with aids in the classroom.
Good question.
Actually, um, it is defined by law where you need to have them, what number of students need to be exceeded before you have them in the classroom. And I think the point was made before that we're bringing more kids back from out-of-district placements that are very expensive, plus factor in the transportation. If we need extra professionals to staff those programs, we do. And we couldn't bring those kids back without having the proper staff to do it. So that's why it may seem like there are more than ever, but we have more programs in district than we ever have. And we don't exceed the code, and I think Mrs. Boone can attest to that. We keep very stringently to what the code requires.
Well, I think to think it's really a problem, it's like many things that are imposed upon not just the Board of Ed, but on the council is state mandated. I mean, one is affordable housing. This is like possibly even with the special ed. I mean, they don't look to help you fund it, but they impose all these requirements. And a lot of things, I think, have to be readdressed in our state government that way. You can't just say, I know Governor Christie is a big proponent for charter schools and whatnot for the cities. But I don't know if everybody reads the Star Ledger, but it was an interesting article, even with Paul Mulchain, what he mentioned about.
Boise City.
Yes.
$100,000 in master screen 14 years. They don't have any openings I, I.
This is how I just wanted to point out one other thing. The extraordinary aid that we're talking about, when it takes an extraordinary amount of money in order to educate special needs child and child, has a one-to-one power professional, we can recoup some of that money. So it's like, you know, you do spend it, but to some extent, you recoup it.
Well, as long as they don't cut us.
That's what you just said.
Yeah, you don't recoup 100%.
No, you don't recoup 100%, but to some extent, you can recoup.
But as long as they don't reduce that amount also. I mean, they're looking to reduce everything.
Like Migno said, that's a unknown. We don't know.
But we do know when we, when we had, I remember, and I know Mr. Limbo and I talked about this a lot. I remember before Mrs. Duffy's reign, typically on the agenda, you'd have 130 students out of district. Now, I, I know we're at 90, I think, the last time I saw. So there's been a big move of bringing those kids.
Well, it was more costly to put them out, so.
It's staggering.
But we also designed our buildings differently too. We had class, we're mandated, some of the classes can only have 25 in a class. We put them in a 20 by 40 room. When we built the high school in UES, we had a dividing wall where we could put two classrooms and one classroom. And if a class ever exceeded, we could just open it up and make that a full classroom.
Can I just make a comment real quick about the supervisors and the administrators? You know, we were talking about years ago, that's one thing, but I think today, there's so many regulations and so many reports that need to be filed just in general, that I think that's kind of pushed the issue where you need the administrators to take over some of that so the teachers can actually teach.
No child left behind.
Yeah.
I noticed also on page 11, apparently a lot of it, OT, I presume is overtime?
Yeah.
Yes, no.
No.
OT is on page.
Page 11 is, page 11 is overtime. Superintendent's office? We're not doing occupational.
Maybe they need it, I'm sorry.
Dr. Font, would you like to address that, please?
That's why Migno's always smiling.
That line item, if you look back, probably has dropped five, at least $5,000. And I've also lost a person and a half in my office. There used to be five people, there's now three and a half secretaries. Plus I dropped 5% off of the top. Next year, you know, it's going to be, you know, we're going to try to cut back even further. I mean, the bottom line is, is that there is some overtime in my office because like for meetings like this, I have, it's, it's a little bit different. But yes, we are taking a look at that and I'm pretty tough with blue cards, which is overtime.
I presume now we're probably reducing stipends also, correct?
Well, well, the stipend is part of the, see, that's the misnomer. The stipend is part of the contractual obligation. So they've, they've already got that and it's part of their salary. If a new person comes in, that person would obviously take on that stipend. But the overtime is, like you asked, is, is something that we're really tracking. Like I said, you know, we, we had five.
So the clerks and secretaries have contracts too?
Yes, everybody has contracts. Everybody has a contract. If you're salaried, you have a contract.
So you offer them that contract when you hire them?
They have to have one.
That will be a bonus?
They have to have one.
And just a bit of history on the stipend piece?
I'll give you that. If you ask the question, I'm going to give you the answer.
I'm going to make it brief.
I'll make it very brief.
When we created the stipends, what we were trying to do was eliminate the subjectivity of how we granted raises to our secretarial staff. So we created the stipend to differentiate the positions, but those people didn't get an actual stipend. It was just a justification for their present salary when we, when we created that, that guy.
All I always considered a stipend and part of it is a bonus. I know working, I'm retired now four years, but working for a Fortune 500 company and have done budgets in the past, I mean, we also, that was my comment about administration. So it wasn't just the staff, it was administration that got cut too in certain positions. And also, you forfeited your bonuses. You know, many times you just, my son just told me last year he didn't get his bonus because they were cutting. Was lucky to keep his job, so he forfeited the bonuses or whatever. No, this is outside. Pardon me?
Stay true?
No, no, no. No, this was per cabinet meeting. And I wanted it's executive per cabinet meeting, so. But this. But this, I mean, this is what you have to do, and these are some of the places that you cut also.
Mrs. Kilcombs, just let me clarify, because I'm not sure you're, you're, we didn't cut any staff. I mean, you keep bringing that up. Nobody got cut, not one person. But you keep saying that, and then you keep using like administrative...
No, I said if you had to.
Oh, if we had to.
I rephrased it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you, if you thought that we were cutting much.
If you had to, or admit, no.
And don't get me wrong, Mrs. Kilcombs, we had this discussion, if God forbid, I cut fifteen, twenty people, you know, you certainly, it's a trickle-down effect or a trickle-up effect. I mean, I would never, you know, we've had a lot of discussions with the associations, we've had some discussions with the principals. The bottom line is, is yes, we're really trying to do the things that you're saying. I mean, if you look at this budget, I mean, this budget, really, I've been in education a long, long time. This is the first time I've been in, where my operating budget is less than it has been a year before. This is the first time I've ever seen that. And next year, I agree with Mr. DeAndrea, it's going to be even tougher next year, because we're not going to have the two-point-one million dollars in capital float around, or two-point-seven million dollars, and who knows if Christie's going to cut again next year? If he cuts again next year, and I'm going to tell you, you will be, we will be talking about quote-unquote staff, because I've got no place else to go.
Well, many people are losing their homes, they just can't afford it. They can't afford the increase in taxes, where people are moving out of the state of New Jersey because of taxes.
But Mrs. Kilcombs, let me just make it crystal clear.
And you're sixty percent of my tax bill.
That the state, but the problem in the state is not caused by Savel or the school districts. I hate to say it, it's caused by a legislature and a state government that spent money they did not have, and they continue to do it, and we're paying the piper now. We lost one-point-three billion.
They borrowed on the pensions, I understand that. But I have been discussing this for three years, correct me if I'm wrong, complaining about going to beer bones, cutting back. I see this, I sing the same song down the borough council, and the people cannot afford it. I consider myself an advocate for the public, because a lot of people are intimidated to come to these meetings, to council, to Board of Ed, and speak out for themselves. But people are losing their jobs. They can't afford things, they can't afford to live. I don't care if it's Savel, the state of New Jersey, or where. They cannot afford it. If they don't have their jobs, how could they keep their mortgages? How could they pay their taxes? And it's sad, it really is. So that's why this is not, I mean, maybe it took Christie to wake you up, but I've been saying this for over three years, and you know that, coming and complaining and whatnot.
There's no greater conflict within me, Mrs. Kilcombs. I am concerned about property taxes, while I own a house, and decisions we make, we impacted. But I'm, as much as I'm concerned about your property taxes, I'm equally concerned about your property values. If we decimate this school district, you're going to start looking around and saying, "My neighbors looked at..." You're going to be like Raúl Wayne Carter, if that were one of the, and I've struggled with this, and I thought about this, and I would love to give you a zero percent, but if we do that, we're killing ourselves for the next year, and everybody who knows anything about it knows that. This is our school district. The character of our town depends on our school district.
It's not just even the property values, that is a complexion of the whole community. You have a good school system and all, it is the heart and soul of a town.
Absolutely.
So I understand that fully, but it's just trying the board to make sure that you are the boss. I've always said that, not the administration, you.
I remind that of Dr. Alfano every day.
The whole boards, no matter what, collectively, it's not just the committee, three people deciding on a budget, it's the whole board.
No, just recommending a budget.
Even recommending it, or whatever.
Well, we talk to each other, too.
It's very, very important, and I'm glad to see it. But it's just, you have to be frugal. I mean, it's a real total wake-up call, "Okay, fine, I'm cutting you off, you're not getting your money."
But I think our frugalness allows us to do what we've done at what I call a modest increase in our taxes. I think, I think that's pretty impressive. Look, you know, down where I am in Jackson, they're jumping off cliffs, they told me, you know, "You run an elective program," so the writing's on the wall there. I mean, but we're here in Savel, and we're saying, you know, "We're doing pretty good, we're not, you know, nobody's losing their job." I'm not saying if the budget doesn't, if the budget fails, and the council doing what they do, and I'm going to remind them about how our tax went up and the water rate, and all that kind of stuff. But see, I don't feel bad about proposing this tax increase. You know why? Because you have to vote on it. It's not like on the other side of town, we give you a tax, and you have lukewarm, and you suck it up. You're voting on it. You know, we're nine members of the community here, we're very diverse, we found that out at the Friday meeting, we're very diverse, and we're making this consensus decision, I believe, that this is what we need to do for our town and for our school district.
But I agree with Phyllis about the forty, about the referendum. I wouldn't spend forty-six thousand dollars right now.
Well, we'll talk about that, and I'm not in disagreement with her, I'm usually a month, but we'll talk about it.
And I mean, that's a lot of money, that's a salary.
There's one important word that hasn't been said here, and that's children. We need to keep our focus on children too, not just taxes, not just reality.
I mentioned that earlier.
Mr. Bovary, you want to say something?
Yeah, but real quick.
It's a little loud, if I can't hear you.
Yeah, real quick. Kevin, put the light bulb on and help me figure out how to transition from the front page to the back page. Just want to be clear, the eighty-eight dollars that we're asking for our taxes to go up on the average, whatever it is, right, is going to raise that three-point-six million dollars on local tax levy on, more or less? No, you're on the front page.
No, the eighty-eight represents...
Right, it's basically going to raise three.
...the differential of basically one million, five-hundred-and-one thousand.
So eighty-eight raises one-point?
Five.
One-point-five million. That's the piece I was...
One-ninety-seven.
Thank you.
I just have a quick, earlier, earlier you said, if this budget fails, you're going before the council, and you're telling them, "This is what we're doing." If they cut the budget, what is it that you're going to do if it fails?
I'm going to tell them that this is, this is the budget we have.
Right.
Any cut to the budget, these are the things that we're going to seriously look at, and it's not a threat.
No, but what are they?
The full-day kindergarten.
Okay.
We're going to look at the courtesy bussing from KJ five, because that's the big numbers, the big ticket items, okay? That's going to give us somewhere in the area of close to about seven, eight-hundred-thousand dollars, okay? We're going to look at those things, and everybody in the community needs to be aware of that, you know? If you, this is a budget...
But you're not once again threatening a hollow threat, remember all that time?
Well, courtesy bussing six through twelve, twelve is not a hollow threat.
I, I know, but how long did it get me to say, "Stop making hollow threats." So if you can stand before the council, if the budget fails, and you're going to say, "This is what we're doing."
Right.
You're going to have to do it.
Roger that.
Okay.
But we're not saying, I'm sorry, but we're not saying, "That's what we're going to do." That's the last thing we want to do. Hopefully, we won't do that.
No, no, but Mike mentioned, this is what he's going to tell the council, this is what we're doing. I'm just asking, what is he going to go before the council and say, "This is what we're doing"?
I'm going before the council to say that if you cut this budget, we're going back, and depending on the amount, that may affect courtesy bussing.
They have failed.
We're going to look at it. If they cut a hundred thousand dollars, I'm not going to cancel it, obviously.
Let's not be silly.
But they need to know that, you know, we are, this is it, this is what's left.
Depends on that.
Right, but there can't be any more gray skin, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that for years, it's been just idle threat, and then, so I just wanted to know what it was you were looking at.
I agree, absolutely.